Good evening ladies and gentlemen, or good morning whenever you watch this. Board of Education regular session that will be voting tonight. Gale Leadership Awards, Bus Driver Perfect Attendance, that's a pretty important thing. I know when I used to drive a bus, they would often scramble to find a replacement or a substitute bus driver if someone had to be out. A couple more. These ladies and gentlemen will be getting awards. Esports State Champions, I'm hoping to get some more information for that for the newspaper next week. Feature of the Year, you saw that in the paper already. This is the leadership team, there's an article in this week's Wiregrass Farmer about that. Maybe now we'll be able to get a picture. Let's see how many there are. Twenty-four of them, okay. There we go, we got twenty-four. Don't know if there's any public participation or not, these are just routine items here. Most of that is routine items anyway. Rubber stamp kind of thing, has to be done every month. There we go. Pause this of course anytime you need to, to look at the agenda. Many of these things were discussed at the workshop session last week. That video is also up on the Wiregrass Farmer YouTube channel, you can go there and see it. We'll have some of the stories from that meeting in this week's paper. And the last page of the agenda, College and Career Academy. These are the sports we've got going on this fall. Raider Cross Country. Looky there, middle school sports, football, that's boys only. Basketball, that's winter. Softball is going on right now, that's ladies, that's middle and high school. Baseball, middle and high school, that's the guys. High school flag football, that is for the ladies. Varsity softball, I think I mentioned that, and football. And there you go. Alrighty, thank you very much. From your going this-a-way over here, which you will see when she sits is Superintendent Christie Ray, Chairman David Mathis, Vice Chairman Sandra Blue, Cornelius Ball, Ann Kendrick, and Sam Brown. Sam is not seated at the moment, but he is here, and Sam is the longest-serving, not to mention the oldest, member of the Turner County Board of Education. Probably owing to the number of awards on the agenda tonight, we do have a full house. I'll show you. People still coming in, this being Turner County, I expect people to still be coming in after the meeting's been adjourned. That's just how some folks here are. Not a complaint, not a compliment, just a simple statement, that's how folks are.
I've got six o'clock, we'll go ahead and get started, we appreciate this large crowd joining us this evening. If you would please stand for indication please. Let's break. We always thank persons today who take advantage of the opportunity to come together, to help the Turner County schools. We ask that everybody should be pleased to be on your side, and may my prayer be heard.
(Inaudible) 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 We have some student staff recognition, we'll turn it over to our Superintendent Christie Ray.
We're excited to kick off the 25-26 school year with recognitions of staff members, teachers, bus drivers, students, and administrators. So we're excited to be able to have all of them present tonight, and we do it in factory or in the building. So we'll start off with our Gale Leadership Advancement certificates. We were actually able to be part of the Gale Executive Coaching Program, there were only a few school systems in the state of Georgia that were able to be part of this program. So if I could have Mr. Joyner, Mr. Clark, Mrs. Sands, and Mr. West join me up. So as I mentioned, we were fortunate to be one of the few systems that actually was able to get four slots, and those four slots allowed our incredible principals and our Assistant Superintendent through their instructions to be able to go through the year of executive coaching with coaches from around the state of Georgia that were able to help them through their processes, through their protocols, and help them be the very best leaders they can possibly be. So their certificate of leadership advancement for participating, including year one of the Executive Coaching Program by Georgia Association of Educational Leaders and the Georgia Department of Education. So congratulations to you all. (Applause)
And Ms. Ray, as I said.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you all. And then our next recognition is going to be our French and Portuguese Director, Mr. Michael Wiggins.
Evening everyone. I'd like to say I commend every one of my bus drivers, just do drive and get our kids to and from school safe. But these group here that I'm going to call out has went beyond their duties, they worked the entire year last year without missing a day. I ain't saying that they're getting old, but that's hard to do. It is actually hard to do to not miss a day without having a doctor's appointment, some kind of appointment to go to, but I commend every one of them that I'm going to call out. And I'll sort of give you a little rundown of how many years they've been employed with us. First off, I'd like to call Fred Cheever's up. Mr. Fred, he's been with us over thirty-eight years. Fred started right out of high school. He's done his duties of driving, and he knows what it is to do and drive. But I commend them for, this probably ain't the only year they've been in our group. (Applause) Mr. Fred missed very few years that he's missed today. Next, I'd like to say Karina Kui. Karina come here from Floyd County, she drove with Floyd County for two years, she's been with us a year and a half, she comes down to take care of her mom, so she stepped up and done a role as a new employee. Next, I'd like to call Miss Peggy Black. Miss Peggy started off in the school system, she used to work in the lunchroom, she moved up and started driving the school bus. Miss Peggy's been with us over twenty-seven years. Next, I'd like to call Mr. Phyllis Price. Miss Phyllis come out, I actually, Miss Phyllis, she's been with us over nine years. She was resident with Sycamore, Georgia. What is that? Next, I'd like to call Shannon Stevens. Shannon is actually one of our youngest, he's the youngest of the group, he just started with us and he's been here years. Next, I'd like to call Wayne Sealer. Wayne's been with us over nine years. Mr. Wayne's been with us over ten years. Wayne was actually hired as a substitute sub, and then he moved up to a regular bus driver. Mechanic John, he was under the weather today, and I don't see him in the crowd. John Sheffield, he's been with us over ten years, but like I say, he was under the weather, and he didn't feel like he probably needed to get everybody to sit. Everyone knows Mr. Richard Chatfield. Mr. Richard, he's been with us over thirty years, but Mr. Richard actually retired, but he's going to come back and drive for us. But unfortunately, Richard got put in the hospital over July. He's been in the hospital in Emery for a whole month of July, just about, so keep your prayers for him, but I've talked to him, he's got a couple more weeks and he's going to be out, and he will be back with us.
Actually, there's one more. Mr. Michael Wiggins, Transportation Director, is also one of our drivers, who also had public attendance last year.
There we go.
One, two, three.
Okay Wayne, I can't see Wayne.
I saw Wayne this time.
Here we go. Smile Fred. Gotcha.
Thank you all for everything that you do, every single day.
Miss Peggy is to drive for our babies, and she would take the car seats home, and she would wash them and clean them up.
We now have Mr. Norton and Mr. Howard to recognize our Esports winner.
All right, I'm Coach Howard, Coach Carlos Howard, this is Coach Cameron Jordan, we coach the Esports team. A lot of people don't know because he was kind of a last minute in the school year, but we won the state championship in match rows. We got three of the team members here. Eric, Javier, Alaysha. All right, a little about this group, when they won the championship, they defeated the defending state champions, who had been playing for years. We just put this team together at the beginning of the year. It's a three-man team, you have to have three men, people on the team, we were stuck at two. The week before, we had to lock the rosters, we had a student that came by, said, "Oh, my friend, she plays that game all the time." And that was Alaysha. So we went and found her, and we took some sweet talking, but we got her, got her there, and it was smooth stuff throughout. Introduce Javier, let's see, Ogan. Ogan, for you that are basketball fans, she would be like the LeBron of Dr. Jordan Robinson. He did everything. It was me and coaches sitting there like, "How'd you do it? How'd you do that?" The other two had less experience, but he was real good as far as giving them advice and telling them how to, you know, pull things out. And then Eric, joking. Eric actually joined Esports because he wanted to play chess. But chess, for some reason, chess, they can raise chess to the team also. We couldn't find anybody else to play chess. So he was different than Javier, Javier called him on, and they were the first two to start with the team. Everybody hit pretty good, just stepping in when we need them. And of course, Alaysha Slaughter was our last person to come in, really helped us out. Not only did they win the championship, they got invited to the national tournament, finished top thirty-three in the nation. At one point, we were like number nine in the state, and I remember Javier kept saying, "Why are we number nine? We're better than some other teams." I said, "Well, when the tournament started proving," and they did that, they, I mean, they ran right through everybody. It was, other teams were like, "Man, y'all guys are good, y'all guys are good." And I just smiled, because I wouldn't do anything, I just smiled, and I'd be out.
I just want to say, we're going to continue to grow this program, it's been a pleasure. These are state champions, this is a real big deal for this community, and we are so proud of each and every one of you. We're going to continue to grow, we're going to compete, continue pushing through.
Great. Oh, well.
Do I leave you this year?
Yes, this year.
One, two, three. Thank you. Quite an accomplishment. First-year team, state champions.
Award recipient is Mr. Taylor Mahan. Mr. Sands, actually, want to come up too?
One of the things that we were able to do at Convocation this year, which was a little bit different for our system, is to have the District Teacher of the Year be kept under wraps. So the Teacher of the Year competition takes place in spring, the judging takes place, the interviews, the applications, everything takes place at that time, but we were able to keep that name locked down tight until July twenty-eighth, which was when we had the district convocation. So we were able to announce Mr. Mahan as the District Teacher of the Year with all of her teammates, her classmates, her peers, her administrators, and surprised her with her family. So they were all able to be there at that time, and so I think that was really special. I think she was a little overwhelmed because she didn't say very much, and I know that she talks a lot, and so I'm going to give her the opportunity to now just say a few things if you'd like, or Mr. Sands can.
I was just so, I was so shocked, I didn't say a word.
No.
I didn't say a word the whole time. I absolutely love Turner County, I've started my career here, and it's funny, basketball player is about to graduate, this is my thirteenth year teaching, so my first original kindergarten class are seniors this year, and looking out, half of the people in here I am currently teaching, so I am so proud of you guys for showing up like true leaders. That's right.
And she's just being humble, she came up and she stepped up last year and did a lot. She took over our Beta Club, she took over the spelling bee competition, and she just so graciously accepted it, she was like, "Mrs. I'll do whatever you ask me to do." And so I said, "Thank you so much, your wife." But she did step up a lot, and I really do appreciate it, she works very hard, and sometime I have to keep her from laughing when she don't supposed to laugh, but she does a good job, and I'm glad that she is at Turner County Elementary School. So thank you so much.
And last, but certainly not least, we have Mr. Purvis, our elementary school assistant principal here with his fifth grade Leadership Academy group, where he'll tell us, probably expand on what he talked about last week, and introduce.
Yeah, hey everybody. So last week, I had the opportunity to present to the board the plan for what we're doing with our leadership team this year, and I'm excited to share with you, I'm sure some of that's their names, I'm sure some of the parents, you know, we started this program completely volunteer-based, and we reached out and said, "Any fifth grader who would like to be a leader, show up on a non-school day at eight o'clock in the morning for a four-hour leadership training." And that in itself, I thought, I don't know, I don't know how many kids are going to want to show up on a non-school day for four hours. And twenty-five of our fifth graders showed up, which is a third of our entire fifth grade class. These kids were wanting to have those leadership roles and asking to take this school over. And so we spent that morning training and talking about how they can have their school, and how it can be theirs, and how these leadership roles can help improve their attendance, their behavior, and just make our school better as a whole school. So we trained them in certain roles, we have quite a few different roles these kids are doing every day, from security checkpoints to make sure that doors are locked and gates are locked, to campus cleanup to make sure that areas of our school that typically might get like snack trash or after-school parent pickup trash is being cleaned up. We've got two young men who put the flag up every day and take the flag down every day. We've got a group that goes into the office and delivers messages and meets with teachers and helps the front office ladies get all the papers passed out and boxes filled. We've got leaders who stand in the hallway and help guide the younger kids to class and remind them to walk on the right and be in dress code. We've got cafeteria workers that take that load off some of our teachers so they can be back in their classrooms planning, and it's our students who are guiding the younger students to do the right things in our school. It takes that away, it sounds so much better coming from our school leaders than it does coming from me. And so having them step up and take charge has been wonderful. I've had a ton of compliments from the teachers as well, they're so happy to see them, they love seeing them doing their jobs. Hopefully you as parents are seeing a slight impact from it, that one of the main goals for this was to get them to say, "No, no, no, I need to be in school today because I have a role that I need to fill." And so I hope you guys are seeing that, and we're going to hold them accountable for their behavior and their grades throughout, and encourage them to take on these leadership roles as their own, and look forward to handing them off to the future leaders in the building in upcoming years. As this is our inaugural year, we've met a couple of times to just talk about small changes that need to take place, and what we can do to continue to make this program better. So if you as parents of these students, or if you as teachers see ways that we can improve this program, please don't hesitate to let me know because right now it's very fluid in exactly the direction we want to take it, and so we just want to see it be the best it can be. At this time, I'd like to recognize as many of these student leaders that could be here, some of them had other obligations tonight, football practices I know, and some other things, and I have one that's feeling under the weather. So I'll call the names in order, and if you're here, go ahead and come on up to be recognized. We'll start with Brayden Prater. Sincere Tarrell. James Nessick. Nia Sanders. Roxxton Buchanan. Asher Ames. Oliver Hinshaw. Zenovia Lawson. Lonnie Hyde. Carson Keane. Tristan Wilson. Elise Richards. Rylan Green. John Beasley. Cash Hilli. Johnny Lewis. Trinity McIntyre. Ann Brady. Zaley Rhodes.
Some of them can stand on the raised part, some stand right in front.
Raul Valdez. Zania Doward. Kendrick Robinson. Ayesha Hunt. Cameron Keane. If you are participating in our security and campus cleanup group, raise your hand real quick so people can see. If you're helping out in the front office. Cafeteria Breakfast Group. Card readers in the morning group. And then my flag, my flag guys, where y'all at? So there is a lot of overlap in our program, these guys fill multiple roles, but we're excited to see them grow into even greater leaders, and then get them over to that middle school where they can lead throughout the next seven years as well.
All right, we need to. All right, we need to... Some of y'all stand up on the stage.
Also, we've got a program that I want to tell you about after we take this picture real quick.
Okay, I need y'all.
You go hack to get him.
Y'all are going to have to squeeze.
Mr. Sims, you get on the, there you go. Step in front, there we go. That'll work.
I can't see the young lady standing near you, Mr. Purvis. Yeah, there you go.
All right. One, two, three. One more, please. One, two, three. Thank you.
And so, lastly, we do have Georgia State Tax Credit proposal in to get these guys some lanyards and materials for the program. So, if you have any interest in donating in any way to help grow this program, uniforms, anything that would help these leaders, just please contact me or Mr. Sims. Thank you.
And now, we move on to the regular agenda. Sorry about how it's wobbling, but that's just the nature of the beast.
Second for Mr. Blue, all in favor. Approval of Canyon Plant Recovery. Have a motion. Second for Mr. Blue. Second for Mr. Kendrick, all in favor. Approval of H.R. recommendations. Have a motion. Have a motion for Mr. Ball. Second for Mr. Brown, all in favor. Generalists. Approval of two new nutrition department employees. Have a motion for Mr. Ball. Second for Mr. Brown, all in favor. Approval of cyber security platform. Have a motion for Mr. Blue.
Do you get those questions?
I have to tell him to answer questions.
I don't know if we asked, but we probably asked.
You asked about the funding.
No, I asked about...
The security for the other platforms as well.
I guess we could think about my, that needs to answer. Could you just, could you get her that and ask?
I already asked her the questions. She's prepared to answer. That's why I said, so we can get it during executive session.
All right, have a motion from this blue. Second for Mr. Kendrick, all in favor. Adoption of TCS board policy, HGF R1 revisions for regulation requirements. Have a motion for Mr. Ball. Second for Mr. Blue, all in favor. Approval of school badge access and added services for STS, thirty-four thousand five hundred seventy-three dollars and fifty-five cents.
This wasn't only last year. Was this only last year? I didn't answer. It was added before, so you can see the documents.
Have a motion for Mr. Ball. Second for Mr. Brown, all in favor. Approval of servers. Motion for Mr. Blue. Second for Mr. Ball, all in favor. And then, we have approval of the amended coaching case.
Absolutely. That was something I've got to be recalled, where we had the ESS, the changeover from the certified employees, classified employees that were employed by Turner County Schools, then with five years or less, were moved to TESS as their employer. So, if you'll see from the letter that Ms. Walker put together kind of explaining the way some of that worked, what we're asking the board is that you grant all of them in, all of our accredited coaches who are current coaches, so that they can keep their Turner County supplement instead of being transferred to ESS for they were considered a lay judge. So, anyone who is currently assigned to a score, then continue with the coaching supplements they have.
Is this recognition ongoing?
The ongoing green guy who was assigned to Turner County.
Have a motion for Mr. Ball. Second for Mr. Brown, all in favor. Have some information items for the board?
We do have some construction updates for you. The construction updates will be a little different for the next month due to the transition from the base one to the base two. One of the main issues that we've all noticed that's been at the top of our to-do list is the bronze around all of the windows, around all of the doors. You know, we've been working on having that issue resolved by the company, and it cost us. We have that meeting set up for this new state enrollment. So, we will actually have the company come here, who will actually go through and read the bronze sample that was approved by the board or, you know, by someone at some point years ago when all of that was determined. And they will have that sample, and we will go from bronze area to bronze area to basically see what was within reason and what is not, what needs to be replaced, and what is okay to stay and not be rejected. Yes, you will.
So, what's Plan B? When I read that, I read a range.
There is a range.
So, what's Plan B in the event that they...
They'll have to replace. If it's out of range, they will replace because we've already rejected it.
If it's within our, within their range, what they specified.
Then we'll have to keep it unless we want to pay to have it redone.
What's the cost of that? We have an estimate of cost of it.
No, because we don't know right now how much we have to replace. Yep. It could just be one set of windows, it could be one set of doors, or it could be an entire cafeteria.
I don't know that I would have noticed it had it not been.
I agree. I agree. There are some that are more evident than others, but it's not something the drivers want to be given. So, I wanted to keep you updated on that. We're getting close now to have the entire lobby area outside the gym and including the gym and the new cafeteria being painted. So, we're in the process of having that to match the inside and the outside with the right glues, the right colors, so that we get further along in those clothes and get somebody determined to do that job. I'll keep you updated on that as well. Stair treads, I know that's a big ticket item because none of the stair treads are in right now. They are currently tracking for them to be delivered here September, from here. It's not just us. There are other projects that JCI is going on at the same time, and that's when they're all tracking to receive September, from here. The elevator has had their state inspector completed, so we now have a working elevator that people can use with permission, of course. And so, we are excited about that. The decorative grills are underway. I don't know if you noticed, but if you're looking in the front lobby area, the backlit term sign with the big grill to the right of it, that grill was supposed to be a decorative grill, not one of those flats, just metal looking plain ones. Yeah, it needed to be a little bit special. Some of those decorative grills have been ordered. That was actually part of the original plan that was not being, they just get the wrong ones. There are a few roof leaks, but it seals around the HVAC units, and they're looking on sealing that, making sure that those leaks are not happening. Exterior fans outdoors have been ordered, bottle fillers should be here this week, and they're going to install storefront doors. I don't know if you walked upstairs, the main grand staircase that went into the high school hallway, there should be a set of storefront there that were not there when we had open house and school open. So, those should also be installed. Kyle will be here Wednesday this week for the bronze team. They will also do this final pitch list for the exterior and the roof at that time. We do have a couple of classroom doors that are going to need to be replaced. They did not pass inspection as far as Kyle and Alton Barrett was concerned. There's some dings and scratches and some rough patches on the door frames. However, that is a big deal because not only is it replacing the door frame, but it's the brickwork around it and the repainting. So, we've decided to wait and do that over one of our breaks, so Thanksgiving break or Christmas break because that's going to take some extensive work. We had to add some water in the cafeteria, but due to there being water lines, that was no issue, so we've added that. There was no water fountain in the original plans. They planned on using the ones in the lobby. And then, when the inspector came in, he said that wasn't sufficient, so we've had to go back and add water into the cafeteria for anyone wanting that. The two transformers, we're still waiting on some final numbers for that. I think I told you last week that the numbers could come back anywhere between sixty thousand and two hundred thousand. Right now, no one has claimed responsibility for that cost. So, we're in negotiations on the shared responsibility and what that cost can actually be. The demo timeline, I think I updated you last week on that. It looks like it's going to happen within the next two weeks. With the base two final date, instead of being, I think it was originally supposed to be end of July, now it's going to be probably beginning of October is the new completion date. The monument sign, that was not in the original plans, or if it was, it was the eve at some point. So, Alton Barrett is in the process of designing that for us. So, we'll have the monument signed with the logos, with the digital board that can change, and you can put announcements on there, and that would be something we'll have in the next couple of weeks, the design, so that we can start that build as well. I think that's all I'm going to have about the construction, unless you have questions.
The bricks, what happened was the bricks.
The brick paper projects. We've actually received our first brick, and so, we have everything that we need. So, now they're just going to start working on that in a little area. So, then the next couple of weeks, I think two to three weeks is their timeline. So, probably by the end of this month, we'll have those. As far as the placement of the bricks, if you're looking at the front of the school, looking at the lobby, standing at the highway before you start actually walking up all the stairs, it will be right there to your left. Will be where the papers will go, and it will be in an area that we can expand. So, it could be a project that we start this year, and then five years from now, we'll do another brick paper project. Or if we want to do it on some type of special occasion, we can roll it out, and it'll be an area that we grow for years.
I've had a lot of people asking, yes, should have already asked you, the little drainage pond out there, real name is, are they going to do some kind of, are they going to fix it where it looks better, like?
The fencing or like landscaping?
Just landscaping, like around it, like maybe put something that...
Even the fence.
Grass, anything.
Like they get like a mesh fencing, would you fancy for it? I'm going to have that conversation with them. It's not in the plans, but that's definitely something that we discuss.
I just have a lot of people, basically, want to live in that area.
I think that's a great idea.
I don't know if it's safe for the mesh, it's not a good thing.
I don't know, have to have that discussion to see if there's a reason to this. But as far as the landscaping, you know, there was no landscaping in the plans until we added some back.
I mean, it could be anything. Somebody mentioned one, like, this is really tough. Like summer, eating the grass, if grass is looking something.
I'll get a little bit in the back of the chair.
Things are progressing very well. We have gotten all but maybe two of our members from base one all on. I have to complete that tomorrow, and then we'll be ready to start rolling out badge access.
We talked about the fifty thousand dollars that was allocated by the state board, which is for Title One Card Day, because we have the TSI designation for the middle school. And so, we are pleased to accept that fifty thousand dollars that we need to support that purpose at this time. We'll get your heads updated, done for. We're working on that as soon as we can. Did y'all have a chance to read through the legislative updates? I know it was a lot. If you have any questions about anything specific, and again, that's just what came out basically last month. So, those, just the hot topics for the month. There'll be more coming out every month. I wanted to be, I want to be in front of everything so I want y'all to be aware, especially those expenses involved, which were some of the things, you know, we're doing funded mandates, but there will be things that we have to purchase and do to be in compliance.
Exit interview summary?
You have those in your packets. They were emailed to you on Monday. This is the same format that I provided to you back in August of last year. You'll notice there were eighteen different people that I completed exit interviews with, and so, for every time you see a number one underneath a question, every time you see a number one, that's the same person. So, if I was number one, that's how I answered the first question, and the second question, and the third question. I also grouped it by questions, so you can see as a whole what the responses were. As I mentioned last week, ninety percent of the responses were positive, were encouraging. There were specific comments made, and these are word-for-word quotes, what I wrote down, what they said. There were new comments made about the progress that was made in several different areas this past year as opposed to previous years. So, that means we're making a difference when it comes to culture and climate. And once you start making a difference in culture and climate, you start really adhering to those relationships, from the academic achievement, the absentees, all the other pieces, all in line. So, that's what we're looking forward to. If I could point you to two specific questions, please read through, and if you have any questions by me, please let me know. But the last two questions to me are the most powerful. The first one was, or the first of those two, would you ever consider working here again? And you can see the responses, all eighteen. Well, seventeen of the eighteen said yes. One said they would if there was some other considerations made. And then, the very last question, would you recommend others apply for position here? And all eighteen said yes. So, to me, I think that's pretty powerful for the work that we're doing in culture and climate for different reasons. You know, people leave and retire and go on and do different things, but to know that they would come back and recommend others to come back as well, means we've got a lot of great things going on. And I appreciate the team making it happen.
Any other questions about the exit interview summary? The board application has been submitted to each of the eight. And then, I believe the next six items we had for this for those last two.
Mr. Ryan, what do you think?
Last one is the athletic college thing, athletic college thing.
It's processed pretty well. You know, myself and the committee is, there's a lot of paperwork trying to sizer through, and it is, it's not an easy process. You know, we're trying to come up with bylaws and rubics on how we're going to separate the individuals. You know, we're looking at, you know, we have state champions, we have state champion coaches, we have state championship teams, we have individuals who have won state champions. We're, we're trying to go all the way back to nineteen seventy-two, all the way up to twenty twenty-four. So, this is, but we have an excellent committee who's helping me with this, and I think we're very, very close to coming up with a first try. So, I'm excited about it. I think the community will be excited about it, and I think in general, everybody will be excited about it. I, I think the community will be excited about it, and I, I think in general, everybody will be excited about it.
I appreciate the work, the work that's done on that.
I think I've been asked some questions, Mr. Warner, did you get those, did you?
I do have them.
Ma'am?
I do have them. The... It's a seventy thirty grant, so the portion that the school system is responsible for, for the Young Farmer Grant, is forty-three thousand five hundred eighty-three dollars and fifty-four cents.
That includes our third percent of benefits and everything.
Yes, ma'am.
We don't have the extended day and extended year as far as the different teachers yet, it's the same, this is what we're getting.
The amendment for the ag grants haven't come out yet, Stacy Beecham will send those out in September.
Item from this, does Superintendent personally give you school highlights?
Right before that, I would like to know you one more construction update, one of the items that is, should be arriving the end of this week are new refrigerators. They're available in Sumeria, so I don't know if you noticed when you did the walk-throughs, but the refrigerators looked a little small for the space. And I don't know when it was measured, I'm not sure where the breakdown was, but we have been looking, we'll get the space around it at the end of this week, at no cost to the...
That's the first thing I noticed.
At no cost to the school system, so we're excited about that, ready?
I, I didn't even know, is, is that, that concern which is, is she on extended day?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, not extended year, but extended day.
Just extended day.
She does do FCC LA.
Yes.
And FCC LA has their post-bill trip coming up, August the twenty-eighth, of training in Warner Robins. I'd have to go back and look, yeah, the recent ones, for the purpose. So we've had a great course week, we have all the principals here, so I know that they'll probably be happy to share some of the details, but it has been exciting being in the schools, in the classrooms, seeing all the exciting faces of the students and the teachers and the staff, not just the students. But as far as everything, starting off on the right foot, we definitely have. Excellence in education is the focus, literacy, you can see it across the board, happening in every single area. So I appreciate what the principals and their administrators and their teachers are giving us to make it all happen. Got anything else to add?
And a great story, I wanted to keep on going, it's been a great story.
New building, new mindset, great culture, I think the kids are really enjoying it, and our community really deserves that, I would appreciate y'all allowing that out.
I know that you had to, it's like... I can't even imagine.
And that leads us to our exciting thing on Thursday of this week, we would love to have all of you attend if you're available. So on August the fourteenth at ten thirty, we'll have our Georgia State flag, it'll be a judgment dedication, and we'll have, two of our legislators are confirmed to be here, and that's Angie Osteen and Pardon Summers. We do have two other legislators that were waiting in their back room, so we're excited about them to have come here to actually be part of that for us, to see our new building, to tour what we've got here in German Town. But mainly to talk about the legislation that's out there, because that's one of the things that we've been encouraged to, from the state office as superintendents, is to make sure our legislators know what's important to us, especially in our school systems, because sometimes the other school systems around the state are louder and they obviously have more people and sometimes more voices, fewer voices. So we're bringing them here to make sure they hear our voice. Thanks. I appreciate that. I think I mentioned the technical college coming for the Titan College and Curragh County Governor's School Training at the end of this month, on August the twenty-first. The elementary school securities, all of the window coverings, all of that installation is complete, we're very pleased with how that turned out. I still kept the dragonfly notification on the agenda, just to make sure for me, I'll need to be in help. Did you ever say it, Ms. Kendrick?
No, uh-uh.
Okay, so just let me...
It just doesn't like, my email is wrong and my password is wrong, and it's the same when I do that. It's a trap. And I try it on my phone, and I try it on my computer.
So is it giving you an invalid? Your time to log in? Which we need to get on, and you let us know in a while, what the graphics have gotten there. And then we added two more of the athletic calendars to your packet, and that was the Raider schedule and the cross country schedule. So you now have Raider, cross country, all of the middle school sports, the high school flag football, high school varsity softball, and high school football. And I did want to make one change on the high school football, I think the graphics asked about it last Monday, the fifth area game on your schedule listed as the twenty-second, but because of the lack of coaches and the lack of...
Officials.
Officials, thank you, officials, we had to move it from the twenty-second to the twenty-first, so it will be held on the twenty-first. And then the last item is the school bus route safety concerns, there should be a letter in your packet as well. Probably the last thing in your packet or the next to last thing, and I've got Mr. Wiggins here to talk about that.
What about that?
The letter consent, about what you did in the city and the streets and...
I mean, my main concern is a lot of growth around stop signs, like coming up Hudson, somebody cut them today, and I can mean never who cut them, that's a good... The other morning, I was coming in, one of the manholes that they just cemented and filled in, I'm talking about it was this deep. They did get on that pretty soon, big. The new people that's employed now, I hadn't talked to the leader that's over it now, but I know several of my bus drivers have seen numerous employees. I see them at the store, I say something to them, they cut the one over there on North, on Hill Avenue, where you come out on forty-one, right behind the bus shop, but it's grown back up again, like you actually got to pull out in the road. But if y'all have noticed, and out of the names of the roads that I did, the names, they are numerous poples. I'm talking about, you know, it's like our city's falling apart. I mean, there's limbs hanging down, I mean, it hasn't been cut, and it goes out into the county too. We've got roads in the county that, if you meet somebody, I don't, you know, either you just stop, hook somebody back up, I mean, there's, there's no way to pass them. I mean, if we can reach out to the leaders in the county, city, you know, maybe get some more of it, some help done. Maybe they've started back to correct some of it, so maybe the letter will help, I don't know. But I do know that main concern over there on Hudson, it was dangerous. Not only you having to pull out right down here at the indoor industrial, you pull up. You can see with, in a car, but if you're in a bus, like all the signs where it's got the two, you know, random wind and industrial drive, and signs, they blind, I mean, it blinds you to try to pull out. But we're going to keep trying to address what, what's going on, so...
I got your letter, I reached out to the city council, they struggled.
Yes, but like I say, the, the main one over there, just like down on William Street, when I come up a high lot, if you meet a car, I mean, the crepe roads were actually growing out in the road. I mean, you know, city workers driving around, they wouldn't see that. And I hate that we wrote the letter to try to correct it, but we had to start something. And it started off me and Ms. Ray talking, it was about some flashing lights down here, and she was going, she said, well, give me the name of, you know, the street, and that's what I done, so...
That's all that I have, unless you have questions.
Uh, any questions?
I, I do, do we have a policy, I want to know if we've got a policy on the two hundred and thirty day employees, and how many, you know, vacation days?
A policy, does that's how many they get?
Well, not how many they get, if, who gets...
So the policy says?
It's just all of them, I, I looked for the policy, I couldn't find it on the...
The policy doesn't specify the general, what specifies administrative law.
I don't care about the number, I just want to know, you know, who gets them.
It's not by the number of days, it's by the role for that.
I want to know, though, is, are they two hundred and thirty days contract, are they a hundred and ninety of them daily?
And I think the answer to that is both, because you've got some number two hundred and thirty, and if you were to take, say, a coach for example, and ends up getting two thirty, that would not be one of the ones who falls under based on his role, and I think that's what means fall, I think. So based on the role of your two thirty, not necessarily just if you're two thirty, based on all your other responsibilities.
Basically, the only people that are truly eligible are the central office staff, that's based off of what I read, central office staffs and petition principles, anybody else, you know, I don't, that's the way I read it.
That's the way I read it as well, unless there's...
I, I want somebody to send it to me, because I don't, I don't see fairness out of it.
Yep, so I'll hit it to you.
I don't think it's fair at all, it's good for one, it's good for the other.
River Valley with the two thirty structure, everybody's in two thirty contract?
Two thirty, if you don't want to have holidays, then give them two twenty-nine, you know. But I think if they're two thirty contracts, then they're all good.
So that's, well, I guess you're saying that, I mean, all companies...
Then all the coaches will now get vacation days.
That's what I said, but I don't know if you can look at, it's like I said, that if they don't, if they don't want to have vacation days, then don't give them two hundred and thirty days, give them two hundred and twenty-five. I just, I just like, in some cases, there's probably an agenda there for, and I know it can be negotiated.
We'll get y'all without compensation that we have.